Morris?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Your slide two, the presentation of the bond projects. Start out with Mr. Miller.
Do I need to use a mic or can we just, can I just talk? It's loud enough.
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Obviously, tonight, you know, for our board. We have two guests with us. We have James Kerr, Kerr 3D Architect, and then we have Jordan Smith of Stephen L. Smith Corporation. Obviously, James is an architect and Jordan is a bond finance to be able to answer those kind of more specific questions. Obviously, I think everyone knows me. I'm Mr. Miller, I'm the superintendent. Tonight, we're here to discuss and answer questions about the upcoming bond projects that we're asking our community to support. I'm going to provide some insight into the steps that we took to get to where we are tonight and to ask our community to vote on May 14th. That will be the election. The steps we've taken, before I get specifically into those, I want to get into some details of the past. Many of our community will tell us stories of 1958 and 59, when this building was built, the auditorium we're sitting in today. Some will tell us about the new gym that was built in 1969. Others will tell us about the library that was built in 1991. The investment of our community 28, 15, 60 years ago is still benefiting the students today. The community has always been known for its family values, respect, cooperation, which was built upon our pioneering heritage of those who crossed the river to settle here. Our past influences our future. That was something my grandfather always told me. My grandfather used to love sitting at his feet, listening to the stories of the old days. One of them that still stays out today was when he told me he had to saddle up the horse, ride into town to go see his girl and go to the picture show, because it wasn't a movie yet, it was still a picture show. And then how he changed, how his life changed, and he fought for the, in the military as a boxer, and then he turned to be a professional heavyweight boxer, fighting Jersey Joe Walcott, and all these great, interesting stories, but when he was at the end of his life, I said, "Grandpa, tell me what the end, tell me," because what do you most proud of? He says, "Well, I have indoor plumbing and a TV, and I started with a horse and an outhouse." But I'm most proud of the rich legacy I'm leaving as a pastor, as a father, and as a friend. Looking outside of our graduation panel, we will see classes of many sizes. Some are small, some are big, but most average between eight and 10 and 12 graduates. Freedom is small, but our students receive an individualized education from a highly qualified staff who know every student by name. I know districts that wish they knew half their students by name and not just the ones that are in the office. Sometimes bigger isn't always better. There's a reason McDonald's doesn't supersize anymore. The world outside of freedom is trying to figure out how to offer what we do, an individualized education approach, to every student in an overplotted classroom where they don't know their name. That's not freedom. Drawn from our graduates of the past, I would ask you to consider this: the models of the previous graduates. In 1959, their motto was, "Success comes in cans; failure comes in cans." In 1969, when they got the gym, "If it hasn't been done, we will do it." In 1935, "Less than our best is failure." In 1931, "Together we skip; divided we're stuck." In 1970, "Not finished, just begun." Freedom has a rich past, and we've just begun. Thank you for taking the trip. Get all memory lane with me. But I ask you this question: What legacy, like my grandfather taught, will we leave to the future eagles over the next few decades? So this brings us to the present. We began to evaluate the needs of the district. We formed a bond committee of various members around, asking them to put their input, what do we need, what can we afford. We looked at the maximum that we could bond, we looked at what the littlest thing we could do, what is the overall package that we know we need to get done. And that's how we got here today. That's the list we've got now. We worked with Mr. Kerr and Mr. Smith in those decisions so that we wouldn't be just making up numbers or guessing that we can or can't. But we put a project proposal together with the support of the board that meets the district's needs at acceptable costs that we believe will have the community support. We plan to address accessibility issues, energy efficiency needs, and educational needs of today's students and the future students that we expect to have. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kerr to go a little bit more specific into these projects. Thank you for your time.
This mic is not made for me, so I'm going to stand up here. Y'all hear me okay? In the back? Okay. I'll just go over a few items about the project. My name's James Kerr, I'm the president of Kerr 3D Architects. We're in Edmond. We're a small architectural firm, and about 80% of our clients are K through 12 school districts in Oklahoma, and about 80% of those clients are school districts that are Class A and smaller. So I've been in a lot of schools and a lot of school districts that are just like freedom. Some a little bit bigger, some a little bit smaller, but I've been in quite a few of the buildings. And so we see a lot of the same needs. Some of them are obvious to the folks that aren't in the school, and some of them are not as obvious. So I'm going to go through this list that the building committee, the bond committee that the local folks have. They put together a list of needs for the district, and the board talked about it, and from that, they've generated this list of projects. And so whenever we do a bond project like this, where it's kind of a laundry list of needs, we always encourage the client to have more needs than we think we have budgeted. That way, in case bids come in lower than we expect, then we've already got the priorities established. We don't have to stop and get the board together and say, "What do we want to do next?" We've already got them listed. So this is a list of some of the things in the project. And you can feel free to interrupt me as I go if you'd like to have any questions. And these are, I think as I read these, you'll discover, these are all needs, really. And the first one, right off the bat, under the category of improving the efficiency of this building and the canvas, is replacing all the windows in this building that we're in right now. Most of them are single-pane glass. We replaced all the windows and frames with what the industry standard is at this time. There is also, along the interest of energy efficiency, replace all the lighting in this building with LED lights. Lighting is interesting these days. It's the only part of construction that gets better in terms of quality and cheaper every day. It's the only thing. And so replace all the lighting with LEDs, which are the industry standards, is part of the project, and lower the monthly bills for the district as well. There's a couple places on the outside of the building where we've got drainage issues where water doesn't get away from the building quite fast enough. That leads to the erosion of either parking lot, paving, or sidewalks, or just grass that are in dirt that washes out into the streets. There's a couple places we're going to correct those areas. Accessibility is another area that buildings this age often run into, and so we'll address that by in the front of the building, creating a ramp with handrails and that sort of thing to get people safely from the parking lot into this building and into the gym without having to go up steps. Inside the building, an accessibility issue is the door, hardware, because there's door knobs on these rooms and on most rooms in the building. We'll go to levers, which are what's required now when you build a new building, to go to levers. And another part of that is you get to redo your keying system. So right now, there's a number of different keys that operate different locks, and so we'll be able to simplify that and design that however the district would like us to do that. Restrooms are another thing. Everybody uses restrooms, not just the kids. And so the two pairs of restrooms that we're going to look at renovating will be the pair here for the auditorium, and then the pair over by the gymnasium as well. And so we'll make those, we'll go into those and replace the finishes, and also bring them into ADA compliance to make them accessible as well. Another compliance or accessibility issue inside the gym is create a space for someone in a wheelchair to sit safely, and then also install handrails up the aisles on both sides of the gym. You don't have any handrail at this time. Also in the gym is a new gym floor. What year did it begin with?
1969.
So it's been there for, that's 49 years. No, that's 50 years, sorry. 50 years, and so it's time for a new one. So we've got it in the budget to replace that gym floor completely. That's in there as well. And then also, to build a covering just outside your front doors. Right now, people that walk in the building, if it's raining, which it does, and it never rains straight down in Oklahoma, so they walk straight from the blowing rain into the building to create a covered area out there to give people a little bit of shelter. Another element of the project is a new ag building. And so right now, we're thinking about about a 4,000 square foot building that would contain a multipurpose classroom and a shop. So about 4,000 square feet, and as part of that, we would demo the concept of that building. Also, what we're calling the existing ag building here to the north, the white painted building, the large one, will become a transportation building. In order to make that transition, we renovate the restrooms in that building, also renovating those restrooms with an aisle and possibly stock show events that might take place also. Would require those restrooms to be upgraded. And so we would take care of those restrooms. There's a classroom and an office in there, and we would also renovate as well. The windows in that building are really large, and so they're the source of quite a bit of heat gain and loss, so we'd replace those windows. And then on the exterior, again, in the interest of keeping water on the outside of the building, we'd prepare the masonry and the mortar as necessary to do that, and then also to keep the water on the outside, and also paint as well. Then on this building again, a couple of exterior things. On the west and south sides, we look at building screen walls to protect your rooftop, install mechanical equipment. So those are on the west and south sides. And then also, in the interest of reducing maintenance costs in the building, I think they've painted the white almost every year for the last several years on the outside of the building. And so there's places where you've got white painted concrete or concrete block, we would look at using a thin brick veneer to cover that up, so you just have a one-time cost of the thin, it's an actual brick, it's just thin, like a slice of bread. And once it's installed, you don't ever have to paint or do anything else to it again, so you can be out of the painting business. So that's my list of projects. Did I miss anything? I'm not going anywhere, so anybody have any questions at the moment? Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, brought up Jordan.
All right. I do appreciate your time. I'm going to stay up here. My name's Jordan Smith. We're the bond advisors, so all the legal work, all the financial side of the bond, that's what our office is responsible for. We represent about 100 schools across the state. We've done the bond issue down in Moreland, over at Woodward, Turpin, Valco, just a couple here in the area. My grandfather always said, "Five times zero is still zero," but it's a little point of familiarity. Real quickly, the bond election is $1.4 million. We're going to put this on a 10-year payout. The best way that we can explain how much this will actually cost the taxpayer, because the two most important questions most people want to know, what are the projects, how much will this cost? James, well, both James, I guess, have covered the projects for us. The best way to explain that cost is 1.4 million. On the inside of your flyer, there's a schedule here. If you paid $1,000 in property taxes this year, and this bond issue passes, you can expect to pay about $1,100 total. So it's an increase of about $126 on a $1,000 property tax bill. If you have your taxes escrow monthly into your mortgage, it's about $10.53 a month. Right now, we're actually seeing interest rates go down. We estimated about 5% interest on these bonds. In the last month, month and a half, interest rates have plateaued and really started going back down. Sold the bond issue today over at Turpin. It was also a 10-year bond. They sold for a 2.46. Sold the bond issue yesterday at Oak Keen Schools. It was a five-year bond, but it sold for 2.14. So interest rates are definitely much lower than what we projected. We feel like this is reasonably the worst-case scenario, but again, if you pay your taxes monthly, it's $10.53 a month on a $1,000 property tax bill. That way, we're not having to guess, "How much is my homework, or my farm, or whatever?" Just get that actual property tax bill. If it was $1,000 in taxes and this bond issue passes, you can expect to pay about $126 more per year. It goes up. It will trickle down a little bit over the 10 years, but it's not going to trickle down to half. It'll trickle down probably by the end of it around $8 a month or something like that. I'll point out a couple of things. Anytime we vote a bond issue, we have to list all of the projects. There's about a four-page document that the board has authorized and signed. In that document, we identified the dollar amount and the projects, and those dollars are limited to those projects. We can't take this money and spend it on anything else. Now, a couple of things, though. When we sell this bond, we have to submit the paperwork to the district attorney and to the attorney general. Because we've got lawyers reading over everything, they're going to go back to statutes. So there's a couple of items in that resolution, in that four-page document that you may see. One of those is what we call a 70% rule. In Oklahoma, by law, a school is allowed to leave 30% of that bond unaccounted for. You only have to tell the public legally, you only have to tell them what you're doing with 70% of the money. So if you're reading through that legal document, there's an item in there that says for which at least 70% of the proceeds will be spent on. Add up the dollars. We have accounted for 100% of the proceeds, but because we have to satisfy statutory requirements, there's some language that triples over. Again, we've accounted for 100%, nothing is left unidentified or unaccounted for, but those statutes say 70. Now, when you sit down to vote, you'll vote on a paragraph that's fairly wordy and legal. Again, that tracks from the Oklahoma Constitution. One of the last sentences in that paragraph, it says, "Shall not exceed 10%." That 10% is not what we're selling these in. It's a statutory limit. By law, you can't sell higher than 10%. But these bonds will be sold in a sealed competitive bid, low penny wins, period. If your local bank donates $100 million and they miss that bond bid literally by one penny, the school board does not have the discretion to choose. So bids will be sold in a sealed competitive bid, low bid wins, period. Today's market is about 2.5%, but again, statutes have a limit of 10%, so that's why that 10% comment is on that valid. Again, that valid, when you sit down, it doesn't have these projects just written out A, B, C, and D, but those projects are part of that four-page document that was signed by the board. Once we sell the bond, the bond issue and money comes into the school's account, it goes into a separate lockbox account, a bond fund account. That way, when they get audited, the auditors can clearly see, "What did you spend this bond money on?" We spend it out of a separate account for these specific projects. Additionally, when the taxes come in, those taxes go into a separate lockbox account as well. So monies can never be mixed back and forth. Makes it a lot easier when they are audited, but those funds will be audited by the school auditor as well, and they'll track back to that legal document as well. A lot of GWIS information on some of the legalities of it. I hope I haven't put anybody to sleep with the legalese of it. Questions I can answer regarding the bond or any part of the language or the interest All right. Thank you.
Well, at this point, we'll move into public questions, comments. We wanted to have this meeting to answer some of those questions, not to give an open forum opportunity. So if you have any questions or comments or anything we can argue. Yes, sir.
So the previous bits on the roof has been successful?
Yes, we don't have any leaks.
The gym roof and gym floor and the ground being on the patio?
No. We replaced every tile, and I don't remember, it's been almost a year since Mr. Davia's had to replace another tile. So. Yes.
What portion is the payoff of current lease purchase?
The roof lease purchase will be, because we'll make a payment before we'll, we'll have this money, it will be about $185. And then the HVAC is around, if I remember, $88, $89. Somewhere close to that part. And by paying them off, that'll free up the local funds to go back to the classroom to meet student needs.
Are you anticipating having replacements for the rear and the floor? What are your, what's the goal for next year? Are you, my parents are planning a renovation, so you're building this long for the next round of new students. What's the population potential for next year that we're only looking at? At one time, we had a high number of, close to 100. Where are we sitting at now with enrollment?
We are at our average, just like we've been over the last few years. If you look at, that's what I made the comment earlier, if you look at all the graduations, you'll see years of one, two students. This has been the history of freedom. You'll see a couple of years, and then you'll see years that go all the way up to 20, 30, and you'll go all the way back down to one or two. It fluctuates. That is a normal ebbs and flows of a community. Communities do that. I believe we're at the moment in a low part. If you look at our elementary, we're gaining students, we're growing younger ones, we're adding more, people are moving into our community. So we're experiencing growth in the lower, we're not experiencing it in the high school. I see it growing and building. If you look at every time there was a project built, the enrollment those next few years continued to increase and increase and increase. You'll see that out there. It's kind of a telltale sign. I hate to quote the movie, but if you build what they will come, the, you can see it by the past investment of this community, it has brought people in. It changes the community, the culture of the students. They are excited, they, I mean, it's just, we're going to have teams next year, we already know this. So we're expecting to play next year. But you never know who will move in and add, because we've had people leave and then all of a sudden, they're back. So I have full expectation that we're going to have a full team next year, we're going to have even better success than we did this year, and continue building bond out.
So you don't have a number right now, but what do you have in mind?
We haven't done a pre-year enrollment for next year.
No, right now, what's your enrollment? Where are you sitting at right now?
We're in the 60s, 65, 68. I can't. 60-something. We're in the 60s. I know that. And that's where we started two years ago. I mean, that's been a prayer to the common thing for our district. Any other questions?
Have you visited all, and the last one, we had those at doing a secure entrance. Is that not anything that you thought is a priority? You have the playground, which is secure, but you don't have a secure entrance. Or when they came up to the school, and you see, "Come in," and we're standing waiting to call, and you have a moment to answer, and or it's time for somebody, kind of let somebody in. That's an issue with somebody right now, is the safety board has to assist them to get in. That's an issue as well.
It was looked at, but in the, when the committee, everybody looked at it, they didn't feel it was a need today. It wasn't, it didn't need with the budget we were trying to stay low enough with. We went full-out bond capacity, yeah, we can do that. But they didn't feel that the community would support that. So that was one of the projects that is a future project, but didn't make this cut. Does that make sense? Anything else?
Do you have, is anyone here for the committee?
Two. I see two, two members right now. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I'd just make a comment on the secure entrance, because there has been something different than, than the last bond, is there is a doorbell. And I've come to the school several times for the last few nights, and you can't get in, you push a door, put the doorbell, someone immediately comes to the door, and then you go to the office and sign in. I mean, it's, it seems to work well. And then it's, I believe, it's unlocked on the hours where class movement is, so the kids from the relay class can come back to get in the building. Is that right?
Correct.
But it's, it seems like it's working well.
There's been over two years of us discussing and looking back at what was on the, first of all, a year several years ago, looking at what's been going on in the building, the things that are in this building that are failing. And there's been nothing done to this school really for 25 years, in maintenance-wise, and upkeep. And you can only go so wrong for you've got to do so. And, you know, I would say 95% of what's in here is repairing and upgrading what we have or not. We want full board, all bells and whistles and playthings. We want our facility to be in good shape for the next 25 years. And, you know, even if there's other plans, we've talked about a little after this, what's next on the rest. And by having that bond committee get together, you know, it was, there was a list that we kind of had already, and them said, "Okay, guys, what do you, tell us what you see." And I'd say 95% of that came back, it was the same thing. So it's just been, I mean, there's just things that need to happen to keep our school up, and, you know, it's just time to do that. I don't know how else to say that, but, you know, there's been a lot of, I guess, cussing and discussing, you would say, "What are we going to do to get this, to make this right where people will get behind it and understand what we're doing?"
Always says the threat has passed being impacted from the Department of Education. We're getting too small, we're rushing too low, enrollment, that we're already, that's a concern. I also have, you know, being small community and we pride on our enrollment, the campus will be open. What happens to us when we actually are starting to begin and we pass on, and then we get our kids sent to Alpha or to Point of Good, and that community then has to face the guy that we had a bond house and yet they have money and are meant to show, or have money to pay out, or it continues to be paid out?
Well, if that did happen, your taxes would actually go up again, because all of the neighboring districts have a higher bonding capacity than we do now. But one thing that is in that consolidation mindset is they look at, "Does your community support your district?" When that comes to administrative consolidation. And if your community has an active bond, has a recent lien passed on, that is taken into consideration and usually stops that forceful administrative consolidation. It takes a minimum of three years for you not to meet standards, is what they, what they call it, before they begin to look at administrative consolidation. We just finished our accreditation audit with flying colors, 100%. We've just got our grade cards back. We are a B in our elementary. Our students are showing 100% growth in academics. We have, we don't have a high school grade because we don't have enough students for them to issue a graduation rate, grade. Without that, they can't release because there's less than 10 students. That's protect that identities of the students, the way they calculate all the years, the way it comes out. So we don't have a high school grade overall, but the parts we do have, we have an A, B, and a C. That's not failing. Where the district was a couple of years ago as Ds and Fs, we've made drastic improvements in that, and we're not there anymore. Our students are actively engaged in a very good education.
How many have graduated this year?
Six, seven graduates this year.
Eight. More than you would know, how many have had a pre-K program?
We haven't had a pre-K enrollment yet.
You have not said.
Uh, I don't think we've said it yet. Pre-K enrollment?
I've not said it yet.
I know of three right now, people have contacted me, but we have not put anything out yet as an actual pre-K enrollment. Anything else? This is your time. This is your time.
When did you say the, my latest, talking about?
Ninety-one. I want to make sure you've had an opportunity.
The board's all, we're all, I think we gathered that this is your deal?
Yes, we have, like you said, we've had lots of discussions, lots of talk to the community, and lots of talk, I mean, with Mr. Kerr. And, you know, we just, this is kind of what we sat down and said, "Hey, this is the best bank for our budget. This is going to get us, keep us going." And our building hasn't checked for the next 10, 15 years. We can do it again, you know, do something again. Yeah, it was the board had it, I mean, it wasn't just the board, but, you know, that's, you know, that was one of the reasons why we put the bond committee together this time, was we wanted to know what everybody in the community thought first. So it wasn't, so there wasn't none of this, well, it's just the board, it's just the board, no, no.
We should put the bond committee.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm, yeah. We put the bond committee together and, you know, did that, and, you know, it was something we thought was fair. I think it's paid off.
We have two students here, and I don't really want to put them on the spot, but I do want to ask two of our students, just because you are the future here. Would you like to see this bond passed and/or not? And if so, why?
I'll stand up. I'm loud, and I can hear what can hear me. You know, being out there with the ag building and maintenance vehicles, we always have to move a bus, it seems like, out of the ag shop for us to do a welding project, or some other vehicle out of the ag shop to do a welding project. And then in time, you know, Mr. Baby has to come all the way over to the ag building to get a vehicle and take it back to his building just to work on it. So I think that building a new ag facility would be real nice, so he can have one central place for all of his stuff, and we can have one central place for all of our stuff. So I'd like to go through.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? Well, before we adjourn, again, I want to thank you for coming tonight. From now until we come to May 14th for the actual bond vote, I'm available at any time to walk around with you where that works under your schedule. Obviously, if I've got a previous schedule, so I may have to, you just may have to make it work. But if there's, there's community members or people who would like to come up and like to get more information, I want to be available for you. I want to be able to answer those questions and do the best I can for you. It is my pleasure to get to serve this district and these students every single day. Some of those students are my students. Even at home, they're my children. So I do appreciate that opportunity, and I want to be available for our community as we move forward. So let us questions come up, please don't hesitate to call. Catch me, let me know, and I will, I'll do the very best I can to you if I don't know the answer by some chance to find out for you. Because freedom is a bright future. I really do truly believe that, or I don't think I'd have my children in it. So with that, again, I appreciate your time and your input's time, and I will turn to the room. Some more?
Either number four then is to adjourn, and I guess I'll make the most of adjournments at 6:35. Please.
Wilson?
Yes.
Or Patrick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Free?
Yes. Yes. Thank you very much.